Anyone else in favor of the petition will be given an opportunity to speak. Anyone against the petition will be given an opportunity to speak. And then Mr. Yaski will present some information regarding the economic and fiscal impact of it. So with that, do you like to start?
It's entirely up to you.
Yeah, what would you like to do? Yeah. We do, we do, yeah. We do live stream our meetings and stuff, so.
My name is Alexandra Rizel, and I'm here on behalf of my four children, my husband Mike, my parents Mark and Lisa Tann, and we are requesting a change in the school district boundaries. The property that we're requesting to be moved into your school is located at the far east side of the district. Some of the homes just across the road are already in the Auburndale district, and we would like to join them. My husband and I currently have our oldest son Gavin open enrolled into your 4K program and intend to open enroll our remaining three children. Our hope is that you will continue to accept our children through the open enrollment process, but we understand that is not a guarantee. We would like a guarantee as we value the education provided in this district along the smaller class sizes and being part of a small community. Both my brother Casey and I were open enrolled into Auburndale School District when we reached the seventh grade, and we have experienced the benefits of a small district firsthand, and I want my children to experience that as well. So we ask that you please consider and accept our request to be part of your wonderful school district through redistricting our home. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to second that, and again, I mean, I've been associated with this district for a long time. What I saw way back when, when my kids were in seventh grade, was the reason we opened and enrolled them here. And at the time, it just, we didn't even know about redistricting or any of that kind of stuff, so we just did the open enrollment, and just, we've been very pleased with what was given here for education. And we have two successful kids, they're doing great, so.
Any members have questions?
So I guess the question Alexandra is, is it, I guess, how many acres is it? Is it, you know, your home and an acre or two? Is it a 40-acre plot? How many acres is it?
It's five. It's the five acres of our home.
All right. And Alexandra, that's where you and your husband and children live currently?
Yeah, the house is like a duplex, so that's why like we're both here.
Oh, okay, okay.
We're both there, living separately, yeah.
Living separately together.
Together, yes. Okay, fine, fine. Do you anticipate any other acreage possibly in the future that you would wish to?
No. At this point, I'd say no.
Right.
But, I mean, we've already set it up so that when my wife and I do pass, they will get the full 40 acres. So if they chose to go with the full 40 acres, that would be what they would do.
Okay. And so the home is on the five acres, and then the other 35 is in the Stevens Point School District as of right now, and not being asked to come over?
Yeah.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Neighbors? Any neighbors called that are two school age children?
Um, on our road, they, across the street, they're homeschooled, and then, I guess, I mean, if you go like in the middle door, but.
If you go towards Highway P, there's the, Jajikowski's got a five-acre plot. I believe they'll, those two, these are two boys, I think they are open enrolled into Auburndale. I think they get picked up at the church, I think. So, we're not sure.
Okay.
We're not sure.
But it's pretty rural, it's not, it's not a lot of houses staffed up.
Yeah, right.
Are you not aware of any other neighbors that, that your kids are playing or socializing with, where they're going to Stevens Point, and then your kids are coming to Auburndale? There's no separation that way that you're aware of?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and the road, I mean, it extends to the end where, I don't know if you know where the Nokes live, where your kids went to Auburndale. It was, as we're growing up, all our, all our neighborhood kids were all going to Auburndale. So it just, for us, it was the perfect idea to open enroll and send them to Auburndale.
Okay.
Any questions?
Anyone else want to speak?
Pardon?
Anybody else want to speak?
Any else? Yeah, is there anyone else here that has any questions or would like to say anything? If not, then you want to present?
Then I guess, some of the things to consider, and again, this is from the statutes in terms of this process moving forward. The Department of Public Instruction recommends that the following factors be, I guess, considered in your decision as you debate this. The first being the geographical and topographical characteristics of the affected school districts, which really essentially means the estimated travel time from the school for the pupils in the school district. So just typing in the address, if you were to drive, it's 9.1 miles from that residence to Auburndale Elementary School, which is a 16-minute drive to the elementary. In comparison, it's 4.4 miles to Kennedy Elementary in Junction City, which is an eight-minute drive where the children would attend if they were enrolled in the Point District, and I think that runs through sixth grade, at which point in time they would then be attending the public school in seventh grade, which I believe in, for you guys, is that PJ's or Ben's? Ben Franklin, which is approximately a 32-minute drive one way, 18.1 miles. So when Alex said that she transferred here in seventh grade, I think it's pretty obvious why, when you're looking at, at a 16-minute drive, nine miles versus a double the miles and more than twice the minutes to get into the bigger schools. So I guess, again, just keep those things in mind. The educational needs of the children, aside in the affected school districts, as she stated, her son is currently open enrolled in 4K and will continue here. So we aren't, we aren't separating, we aren't changing anything in terms of demographics. It appears as though there's no neighborhood friendships or allegiances or families that are the social groups, running groups, and so on, they're going to be affected by that. The territory or the land is not going to create an island. And if, as you're aware, our district, in some parts of our district, the line ends at the Wood County Portage County line, and there are other parts of our district that extends into Portage County, but there is a large portion of our district in Wood County that belongs to the Stevens Point District. So on the east end, you got a lot of little 40-acre and 10-acre and 20-acre chunks, so it's not a clean line. This will not create an island. Like they said, right across the street is, is, across Trestic is the Auburndale School District. So again, that's, that's, that's not a negative factor in this request either. The testimony, you've heard the writ, or heard the testimony, if Alex is able, if she wants to leave the writ statement, I can include that with the documentation as well. You have the, a picture of the land from above, a picture with the information, tax information, aerial photo of that and so on, so you can see the value of the property. Again, none of it will become non-contingent of the district, so I don't see any reason why we would not want to prove this when the time comes for us to take action on. Do you have any questions of me or anything that I've said that you need further clarification on?
We haven't received any other documents or anything?
No, I've heard nothing from, from anybody else, nor from the Stevens Point School District, so.
Okay. Does anyone else have any further questions? Okay, if not at this time, we will close the public hearing, and then we will deliberate whether or not.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much for coming.
Battle of hope.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yes. So, any concerns or any discussion regarding, any touch into children or anything like that?
So then we'll do that as a first action item.
Great. Discussion, okay. All right, consent agenda items?
I move to approve the consent agenda items as listed.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Would you like to give your report, Mike?
So the financial report, first I'll go through the check numbers and then go through some of the items that Kayla and I talked over with our business manager and with Mr. Yaski. So manual checks, number 11325 through 11338. Regular checks, number 85486 through 85605. Transfer checks, 202400077 through 202400104. Payroll checks, 43323 through 43344. Payroll direct deposit, 900068123 through 900068380. Fund 30 checks, numbers 1147 through 1148, and then paper checks, 3508, for a total In the finance committee meeting, we did go and review both the revenues and expenses. As of this time, we do have quite a bit more expenses than revenues with the timing from the state. Right now, we are up, have received approximately $2 million less than what we have had to expect. So that's part of the reason why we like to have a healthy fund balance, so then we do not have to go in and borrow for things. We discussed the CISA 5 contract, we looked, looked that over. We will not vote on that tonight, I believe that's probably next month on that, but we did go and, and discuss a couple of the items, and it's actually just a little bit less as far as the cost, because we will not need quite as many services from CISA 5 for next year, and we're looking at seeing if one of the contracted items may be able to be done locally. CISA 10, they are the, they do the grant writing, and so that's the primary one with CISA 10. They have worked very well with our business manager and our superintendent and kept us up to date and getting everything done. When Chuck Pant was here, Chuck was very interested in that, and so he, he went and basically learned all the different things on that. And so that's why we needed to go through CISA 10, at least for a while, so that our business manager is not overwhelmed with everything else on that. Review and discussion of architect agreement with PRA, that gets into the referendum that we will have. Some work has been done. Yesterday, the architect Steve was on a Zoom, and he went through different things, and we had a real good discussion on that. Kayla, want to add anything else on that?
Just with the CISA 10, they also do our district learning.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I forgot about that.
Okay.
Then the frontline education renewal, that is something that our business manager uses and really helps clarify where all the different expenses are going, basically through, through graphs and charts and everything, and compares this year to last year, so that if something looks out of place, it's very easily to look at and try to find it. And so that will be up for renewal tonight. The food service meals, we reviewed the, the numbers on that, and they are quite comparable. Discussed light replacement in the secondary gyms, and that will be talked about a little bit more as an action item tonight. And then we'll have our, you know, next finance meeting just a couple days earlier next month due to a, a couple date problems and such. Kevin, anything else that I missed there?
I don't think so. We did talk about being in action, and I, actually, I'm coming up with the WD Connor Scholarship. We've got two signatures on there. One of the people that signs those checks is not in the district right now, so we need to just add some more names so we get those checks out and indoors then.
Okay.
So we don't have a lapse in financial ability to deliver the money, so.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, then, all those in favor of the consent agenda items signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Elementary principals report.
All right. Through Act 20, all the winter testing has been completed, the benchmarking, we got through that, using AMES Web, trace case through free, and the PRPs, the personal reading plans for those students that needed it were created, sent home, some were returned signed, some didn't sign them, send them back for very, various reasons, but we still implement the plans. Now starts the 10 weeks of the intervention to help those students, and the progress monitoring, we look for that growth in that area, and then come spring, we do it again. So, see how it goes. Still things we're learning, I just got yesterday, 4K guidance, 4K starts next year for the Act 20, so that's, that's, we knew it was coming, but now we have more guidance coming, go through that. Spring aims, updating the PRPs of how we're going to do that, what's required of that, and then what happens to the personal reading plan when they go to fourth grade, so learning that part of it. And then next year's dates, make difference CISA 5, send out dates so you can have a calendar year next year and kind of plan ahead, not all at one time with the forward exam and such. Intervention, our interventions came, and we need to, we've been doing math and reading, and they're going to hammer out more reading, we need to do more reading intervention. Katie Bultis, our new intervention agent, is still going to do some math with the kids, but we're going to do more reading intervention right now, that's for the greatest need. There's been a lot of gains in math, so that's where we're going with that. And it's grade level dependent, meaning each grade level has, has team decided how the best utilized, Katie for math or extra reading as well, so. Students of Month, again, we're very popular with self-discipline in January, entering fairness for the month of February, so that's a great program. We had a successful Kids Heart Challenge, so thank you to Mr. Nowitzki for organizing that. Friday, we have our staff for fifth-year basketball game, so that's always a lot of fun. Summer school classes were new, we'll start with the booklet together and see what options we have, and I'll share that with you in the near future. Again, thanks to all the volunteers and substitute teachers during the cold and flu season we fit, it's been a lot, on top of all of our testing and filling in and things like that, and everybody helping each other out. 4K registration's underway with our 40 of the week, Friday off next year, and they're trickling in, we've been sending out emails and flyers and mailings and things like that, we'll keep getting that out, and that continues to come in all throughout the summer, things like that as well. Other numbers, you're going up for that. We celebrate the 100th day of school, it's always a lot of fun, big accomplishment, a lot of fun with that. And this is that part of the year where it's just constant, it's, this is the big, you know, learning time, it's the day-to-day, it's, so big thank you to everybody for their consistency, working hard, just keeping learning going, this is where you're in it now, you know, so, before the spring, so, just keep on trucking through. Any questions on anything? We're just moving on through.
All right.
I'll just mention to Andy, we did have the school boards convention in January and everything, and you had asked about asking what some other districts were doing as far as their promotion policy and everything, and so I probably talked with at least half a dozen districts, if not more, and basically, all of them said, no, that's still on the back burner, and they haven't done much of anything yet.
We should have by July 1, whatever the date is, yeah. So they're, it's like us trying to learn it all as.
Correct.
As we go through here.
So, so I couldn't pick up any pointers to go and help us.
We're going to figure it out as we go, kind of like we're all doing.
Right.
Yeah, anything else, any other questions? Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Van Wyk?
So we had our third inclement weather day just the other day, so it was our first virtual day, so our teachers give the students kind of a heads up what to do in those situations, and some teachers will provide like a, like a virtual meet with their students, and some teachers will provide an online lesson or give them the homework that needs to be completed during that time. So it kind of varies depending on the classroom and the discipline, how that's handled, but it seemed to go well from the perspective of, the first one this year, hopefully we don't have too many more, depending on the weather, but that was our first virtual day of this week. In the, in the past month, we've had some pretty cool field trips. Mr. Vanderwiss took his students on a tour of stop construction, and I was able to talk to some of the students who came back, and they really were excited to see some of the different career potential there. Eighth-grade class got to go to the Fox Cities Performing Arts Center, which was a pretty big trip to take the whole eighth graders, a whole group of eighth graders down there, but, you know, talking to students coming back, it was a neat thing for them to see, something, something different they hadn't seen before, so it was nice that they had that opportunity to see that. We also had our Students of the Month recognized, so for self-control from high school, we had Jasmine Drager and Taylor Anderson, so if you see either of those high school students, congratulate them. And in the middle school, we had Alana Churney, Cory Krug, and Maden Meisner were our Middle School Students of the Month. And for February, we're focusing on attitude, and so in the beginning of March, we'll recognize those students as well. Just this past weekend, we had our, our wrestling regionals, and we did very well, we were so close to advancing, the team was just a half a point short of advancing as a team, but we did have, we did have seven boys going on the sectionals competing this Saturday, so hopefully we'll have some going on the state, that's what we're hoping for. We also had our two girls compete on Friday at the, at the wrestling regionals, and they both went on to sectionals as well, so that'll be really neat, they'll be competing on Friday night as well, an opportunity to go on the state as well. Also, speaking of our tournament season, our girls' basketball team, I believe got a three seed, if I remember right, and, and they have their first playoff game will be next Friday night at home, so hopefully they get off to a good start there. Switching to fine arts, solo ensemble will be this Friday at Columbus High School, so students are all practicing, getting ready for that with their solos and their ensembles, a lot of excitement there. Also, our teacher took a group of students today, Mrs. Heek took a group of students to the Marywood Conference Art, which is displayed at the Center for Visual Arts in the Loft Gallery in Mossaw. So, and that'll be displayed from February 19th, which is today, all the way through March 15th. So if you're around, you can see some of the awesome art, not just from our school, but from across the conference. Teachers are able to select some of the top pieces and have them displayed there, which is really neat. We also have, Mr. Carl will be taking his class to the Holocaust Museum on March 5th, which is another neat experience for our students to, to be able to see that. We also have our annual eighth-grade reality store, which is a really neat trip for our middle school students to see what the real world is like and how to budget, and, and some of the expenses of raising kids and having a family and all of those things. It was, when I was a middle school teacher, a really neat experience to take students there, have their eyes opened a little bit at how much things cost. Also, our drama production is coming up here in March, looking forward to that, it's going to be Murder Can Be Happening is the name of it, so really excited to, to see that. We also have parent-teacher conferences on Monday, March 3rd for the third quarter, and parents are able to sign up through Sign Up Genius for a link, that's middle school and high school, will all be on that same, the same night. And we also have ACT testing in March, and as you can see on your agenda later, we'll be hopefully approving a science teacher, I had a science teacher interview for that, for that position, and I'm really excited with, with the candidate we chose, so.
Great. Thank you.
All right.
And then, Mr. Yaski?
All right. Fourth here, if you want to.
Pages.
Just, I guess, just hitting a couple highlights here. The state in the fall, I think it was around October, they notified the district that we were randomly chosen to participate in this ESEA Education or Elementary Secondary Education Act, and we had to submit some documentation that shows that we are meeting the requirements, the federal requirements of this law to receive the grant money that is associated with it, so originally, when we were polled, there are nine, I think 90-something documents or pieces that we could possibly have had to pull, but we were in the universal mode, which means we had to pull 12 documents. I listed those there. They, the four, four specific areas relating that they're looking for documentation is informing parents and families, family engagement, identification of migratory children out of home or foster care services. So I met with the administrative team, we compiled most of those documents, Andy gave me a lot of the documents, Sam, the counselors forwarded some things, there were some things that were in our newsletter, annual newsletter in the fall, but then there are some things that I'm in the process of trying to write up and document what we do and so on. It all has to be submitted by the seventh of March, so it doesn't seem like much now, but I'm going to tell you, it was rather labor-intensive process. And then the other part, which maybe isn't in there, is it also needs to be in Spanish. So everything has to be, or had to be translated, so you got to submit an English copy and a Spanish copy. So again, that, that I think was probably as difficult or one of the more time-consuming things that we had to navigate through, but I would say sometime next week or maybe the week after, early that week, I will get together with the group again and just make sure that we've got all the documents for that submitted. Again, it has to be submitted or they could suspend your federal grant, so that's what we've been kind of, I've been kind of working on the back burners.
So, so this was through the DPI?
Yes.
That, that asked for and everything?
Yeah.
And required both English and Spanish?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. 90 districts in the state got popped for samples, so, yeah, we were good with one of the 90, so. Second thing, I attached to you a letter, I wrote to Governor Evers, you can just see that, whatever, again, encouraging him not to hold on to any FEMA monies that may be awarded to the states. In other words, if the federal government decides that a FEMA grant or FEMA monies that districts apply for that or municipalities apply for that, the federal government generally releases it to the people that are making the application. Governor Evers says, or the legislator powers to be in Madison and said that, hey, we want to be able to have that money to see how it's allocated and so on, so I wrote a letter to him, encouraging him not to do that. If we are submitting our application to the federal government and they are awarding us based upon that application, we don't want the state involved in that at all. And again, I think you can see that it's a front and back, a two-page letter, outlines that process. Again, I Again, I wrote that I'd give up in school district of Alvindale. So I just want you to be aware, should anybody ask your question then. Helping Hands, the after school program. Lynn and I looked at that. I don't think our prices have gone up in the last three or four years in terms of the cost for, for childcare. It stayed the same, five dollars per hour or six dollars for drop-ins. Each year, our costs for paying the employees to run that though has gone up. So by the end of this year, it'll be the first time that it'll actually be in the red. We will, we're, we're gonna lose money running the program. So I would say before next school year, a conversation should have, to have once we know what we finished with, how much you're gonna have to raise that. Again, we don't wanna make money on it, but we can't afford to lose money either. So what, what, how close do we get to break even? And again, that's a conversation that's gonna have to probably happen in, in June and July or July and August, somewhere in that frame. So, and again, Lynn is aware of that. So she will work with you guys as, as you kinda navigate through that, that, that area. Our ESL aide, I received a letter of resignation from her. If you recall, we, I think hired her in January. Then she was enrolled or not enrolled, but signed up, enlisted to go to the army. They told her, as soon as she passed her physical, she can go in June. She went in, passed her physical and they say, hey, good news, you're going in March. So we hired her into January, she resigned in February. And we immediately posted the job and I got an applicant today. So I will be following up with that applicant to see if we can possibly get them in and have an interruption in services for our, we have more, more than fifteen students that are learning English or their families are speaking very broken English. So obviously that's a huge resource and an opportunity to, to, I guess, make those connections and help those students. But maybe more importantly, help the families at home as they're trying to, you know, look at the school and share stuff and so on, so. And then the last thing there, and I, I think Steve mentioned a little bit, whatever, the middle school, high school principal position, it's closed. It closed on Monday. We ended up with eleven applicants. Five of those met the criteria, having at least two years of administrative experience. We kinda have a timeline. I think he's confirmed the first round of interviews that, that first week in March. You guys then will have the opportunity to visit with the final candidates. Then that following week, the week of March 10th or 11th. I think Monday or Tuesday works the best schedule wise. March 5th is Ash Wednesday, so we're in the Lenten season. I think it's in our best interest to stay away from Wednesdays as much as we can during Lenten season. So there's nothing scheduled on the calendar for Monday, March 10th or Tuesday, March 11th. Thursday is a, would be a girls' basketball sectional and Friday would be a boys' basketball regional. And I'm assuming you would wanna have somebody recommended or to bring forward to the board for approval at, at the March meeting.
I'll be out of town on the 10th.
You'll be out of town on the 10th. You'll be in town on the 11th.
Yep.
We don't have to decide that right now, but I think that's a conversation as we look at the end of the meeting when we wanna set future board dates or meeting dates. But again, I just wanna bring that to your attention that, I mean, you are, as far as, as policy dictates, part of that hiring process as relates to school principals, so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
All right, we'll move on to board reports. Focus on schools.
Focus on schools, yes. Well, I thought the thing that we should focus on tonight is we should talk referendum.
Good focus.
And since most people are aware or aren't aware, maybe they don't understand, we don't, we don't get opportunities to discuss this matter as, as a board until we're in a board meeting just, just because of the rules or the laws that we have to live under. So the, the referendum, if you recall, we approved the questions, I think on the 21st of January. We went down to the convention on the 22nd. Again, to attend, we were together, but not a lot of discussion was, was occurring regarding, and we were so involved with everything else we were doing, we didn't have a chance to discuss some of those things. So coming back then, the, the issue, or I guess my, my concerns here is just not having a lot of opportunity myself to really dig in and dive into this and, and start pushing things and pulling things together to push out to the community. And it's my intent to do so. But right now with the day-to-day operations and running a person short at district office, it's just been extremely difficult. If you recall, you know, coming back, we were dealing with, I guess we had just hired a superintendent we had looked at replacing, we had some postings that occurred. We had some hiring things to do. There was, I guess, a lot of things that kinda came piling up right in a hurry when we got back. So with that said, I did reach out to PRA, our architect, who we worked with for the last, I worked with Steve for, I think, seven or eight years, three years here. And just said, Steve, you know, where are we at? Are we behind or are we ahead? What, what should we have? And he said, you, you are, you're in good shape, but you, you need to have things moving forward. You need to start pushing some information out. So I reached out to him and I'm sharing that sheet with you in terms of what he recommends is done and what they can help or support us with and what we need to do on our own. So I've been working on what we need to do on our own. And then we met with Steve, as, as Mike and Kayla said, in the finance committee meeting. And we will have some message boards or some flyers and some mailings and those sorts of things. We can start getting out. The, the, the big thing I, I think that, I guess I wanna have a discussion around as we focus on schools is what role do we want to play as a board or as an administrative team? And I'm gonna include Andy and Steve in this as well, since each of those have projects in their buildings. This needs to be taken to the community. I don't think having open meeting, listening sessions where we invite the community and we're gonna hit all, everybody that, that we need to have. So I guess I'm looking for ideas or ways or questions or suggestions that you have about how we take this message on the road, where it can go, where it should go, how we should attend, how we should address those matters. So the community becomes informed. So I'll be quiet and you guys can kinda discuss and.
So I'll, I'll go and start out. We as a board cannot go and promote that, yes, this should be done. We provide information. We provide some questions as well as try to answer questions that you have. And I'll say, and I'm, I'm gonna say this, that I think it needs to be a, a team approach. And I also think that we try to have some information where we know there's gonna be a lot of people. Plus, we also reach out. So as an example, earlier we were talking about that, okay, the girls are gonna be hosting a regional game. Yes, when the finance committee was talking with Steve, we asked him, we would like materials so that at that regional game, we could have materials. And then one or more, either board members, administrators could be there so that people can start getting the information.
Okay, I have a question with that. Is there any rule with the WIA about that?
There's none.
Nothing, okay.
Are there any rules about the community members advocating for the referendum?
No, they can, I mean.
So if you had a volunteer committee?
We had a, we did at one time have a yes committee. And as long as they're not associated, I mean.
We just, we, we can't.
Can't be employees or things like that of the school.
Yep.
We, we, we can wear buttons, please vote.
That's all you can do.
That's all we can do.
Like you could have somebody else come in and say, these are the things, this is what we want. This is what, this is what the yes vote needs.
Yes or, or vote no. I mean, I've been thinking about the Marshfield referendum that just went through. There were, you know, vote yes or there were vote no's.
But there wasn't a lot of information to the community either about what that referendum was titled.
Correct.
And that's what we want.
Our, our point is here is we're gonna present the information. We're gonna present why, we're presenting the cost, what you're gonna get and so on. But we can't say, now that we presented this, go all the way, yes.
So what is, who runs the school district Facebook page specifically?
The school district Facebook page, a school district employee.
It is. So do we have to have that person's permission or can we not use that platform? Do we have to start our own platform?
You would have to start your own platform.
Right, send ya.
Give me a call. Yeah.
Great. And any suggestions on any gatherings where people are that we could go to to provide the information? I know we did town boards, we did fire departments, things like that. That's still not a huge number of people
Correct.
that you're getting, so.
I think it's your social media platforms. My family doesn't attend the sporting events.
Okay.
We just don't have the capacity.
Sure.
And, and my thoughts are to, what, what, what I was thinking in conversation I had with superintendents, just go around with a camera, more video camera, much as Mark Knoyer does with the snippets of videos, just have a video. Hey, this is the elementary school. These are the temporary walls and you can see the wall. You can see the wall bending. This is our 1964 air handler. This is, this is our track where you could see the, the bare asphalt or you could see the cones or you could see the, the cracks. You know, we go to the, I wanna go to the roof now when it's twenty-five degrees.
No.
Hopefully, you know, at some point in time it'll melt and it doesn't leak. But this is what the roof, this is why we're looking for that. We go into our, our 1965 science classrooms and, and show the original sinks. We can show the original floor tiles. We can show the original cabinets. This is why we're looking at the upgrades. Or flip on the lights and, and see that all of them don't work. Those are, I guess, the things that, that, that we can do to promote that again, through, through the social media.
Through the Facebook page, yeah.
Or have pictures on a picture board available. So those are, again, our control of those things. We can do student, I won't say student interviews, but I know some schools, the students talked about, if we're looking at a cafeteria or a cafeteria or whatever, the music students can say, you know, this is why, this, this is how it would benefit us. It would give us a chance to perform. It would give us something that's separate. We aren't playing in the gym then, where we have faiet. We're, this is something we can look forward to. This is our space. We can fill this 500-seat area with people that are here to enjoy music, not in where, you know, this is the same place we watch basketball games or wrestling matches or whatever it may happen to be. But just have that message out or have a couple of students talk about, you know, I, I would really like to run track at a home track meet sometime in the next three years. This referendum will allow that to happen where obviously it doesn't now. So there are things we can throw at social media wise. One other thing that I, I thought was very good and Steve mentioned it, he already started it. The typical question and answer that they receive when they do referendums, just put a referendum tab on the school's webpage, frequently ask questions. What's it gonna cost? What are we gonna get out of it? Why are we doing this? You know, when is it gonna be completed? All the things, and then throw that out to the community through the, the eagle flyer or a separate, infinite campus message. And then encourage people, what questions do you have? And when those questions come in, immediately post those up on the website and then write the answer to them. So you have a living, breathing document. It may have a hundred questions by the time we're done. But if anybody asks a question, I can put the question on there and then give an answer to it that everybody can read it. Just, just to try to, again, encourage people to be engaged in the process. And if, they don't have, they don't necessarily have to agree with it, but at least they'll know what the answer's gonna be. I think another option would be the ability to possibly visit the, the local churches on Sundays after services or talk to the clergy involved and see if there's an opportunity to, to, to meet people before or probably after the services just to maybe it just be available if they have questions there, if they aren't on social media. So I think those are options outside of your village, town boards, your fire departments, like say sporting events or, you know, parent teacher conferences coming up at the junior high. Obviously that would be an opportunity as well as people are coming in to gather information. So I think there's opportunities there.
Is it possible to give a visualization of what the construction looks like? Like, you know, how sometimes they put those pre-made pictures out?
Yep, and we, we talked about that, where the, the structure, the footprint, what does it look like? Or above, with a little description of what we envisioned going inside. That's part of that, that flyer that's, that's gonna go out as the information, the message boards that we're gonna have. We just, we just haven't had an opportunity to kinda dig into that part with the specifics yet. But that, that is, that is part of this, this, this spiel moving forward. But my concern is, is we need to approach this as, as a group.
A team, yes.
And again, that's, that's myself, but it's, it's Andy and it's Steve and it's anybody else that's involved. I know Michelle has reached out with, from the AEA as well. You know, what, what do they need to support us getting the information out? So once we have a plan, I think there's enough people that would be able and willing to, to, I guess.
Help this person.
Speak and are involved with some of these organizations or are contacts with the organizations that they will speak and be able to answer questions. Again, this is what it is. This is why we think it's important. This is, you know, what it's gonna cost. This is what we believe it would look like. This is how we'll benefit our students. All those questions that we kinda know we, we need to answer. But I guess just need to take it to that next step.
Right.
Yeah, another mass event is the, the pancake theme. It's gonna be, both be in as, as well as drive-through and such, so.
What days, that's March?
That is March 23rd, I believe.
Okay.
Yes, Sunday, March 23rd.
When are elementary conferences of those, those are April?
March 27th.
Yeah, March 27th.
March 27th.
When is that, when is that play again? The 15th. Okay, the play, March 14th and 15th, that'd be pretty important for the cafeteria.
Yes.
Yeah. I like that idea. Any other dates or places or locations you can think of?
Can we talk about the coffee places?
Absolutely, I have been already.
Oh, that's, yeah. They talk about that all the time.
March 27th is also a rot sale for the tractor day.
Oh, okay.
So we've got time. I, I just, I don't, I don't wanna, give it the last two weeks.
No.
I wanna be able to push, receive feedback, answer questions, push, answers out, get feedback, answer questions, push, you know what I mean? Just that, that steady exchange so people are aware of what it is and have an opportunity to, I guess, get their issues or their questions addressed so they feel comfortable. Again, not, not comfortable voting yes or no, but comfortable about. Again, not, not comfortable voting yes or no, but comfortable about what you're voting yes for, or what you're saying no, we don't want that. I, I don't want there to be any, uh, what we didn't know, well.
And the vote is April first.
Yes.
Yes.
As early as it can be.
Yep.
So yeah, so, you know, I'll volunteer to do several of these different things and such, uh, yet, it would be good to get a listing of all these different things and such, and then kind of sign up and kind of try to, to work within who's available to this, feels that comfortable doing it, et cetera.
And that's what I thought I was just going to do, I was going to tell you, what I'll do is I'll just create a spreadsheet. Again, not making decisions, just, these aren't, these aren't the events. It'd be nice to have, uh, a couple of board members, or a board member and administrators, or a couple of administrators and a board member, or two board members or whatever, based upon need. And obviously, um, I mean, some of you are more connected to the, the town of Auburndale Board than what others are, so you, you may have connections there. You may feel more comfortable speaking, um, to those groups.
Can we have, like, uh, the music staff, or the science staff? Anybody that's going to affect?
Ab- absolutely, they, they will be, I have no problem with the music staff, and I think they will be more than willing to, to, um, to participate in that. But again, I, that would be our, I would throw that.
That's right, that's up to you, yeah.
And let her kind of coordinate with her people.
Okay. All right.
So expect the document at some point in time.
Sounds like a plan.
Right.
And Sharon, you're going to contact him?
And I, and I, and I would say, um, I would say you'll expect to see that this week, I'll at least get it started. Um, and then, um, I guess we'll kind of go from there.
Yeah. Steve went and showed us with the Zoom, uh, some of the materials they had used with other school districts.
Oh, okay.
And I was very impressed with, with the information that was there, the, I'll say, the art quality, the renditions, all, all those types of things. Kayla, what, what was your impression with seeing it yesterday?
I thought it was really good.
I answered your question.
Sorry.
You just got to get it.
Up your voice.
I know.
I've got no problem with that.
I know.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, then, we're on building and grounds?
Um, buildings and grounds, we went over, um, our master plan for everything that is purchased and remodeled or built goes on our master plan when it was done. And, uh, we go through that every year to determine, um, well, kind of the life expectancy, what it might cost in ten years or twenty years. And then, uh, it's nice though, because you know when it was put in, because otherwise time gets away and all, it's, when did we put that in? Well, it was nineteen sixty-four, or whatever it was. Because there are some things on there at, from nineteen sixty-four.
Right.
So, uh, we went through the, the grade school, the high school, middle school, um, all the, anything to do with the school district. So, uh, we kind of tried to update that as best we could. And that was pretty much our board meeting. And we, we, we worked with Kevin, we worked with Russ.
Yeah.
And, you know, and, and the, and the principals on what, um.
The priorities.
Priorities, um, what they think might be coming down the road for replacement or whatever.
And, and that, that, that capital approval plan is what it's called, um, that, that very well into a strategic plan.
Yeah.
You recall, some of the things identified in the strategic plan that we can look and tie directly back to that capital approval plan and say, you know what, they said that, and where was it on the plan, and we can see where, you know, it, it doesn't fall within that, that three-year, four-year, five-year plan. If it didn't, then obviously we, we have to make some adjustments, but I, it, it felt, it was like two and a half hours of line item by line item. It was, it was kind of, it was tough to work through, but when it was all done, you feel good about, okay, we looked at everything that we have. And, and we know when it was put in, what it costs, how long it is supposed to last, when it should be replaced, um, and then can we budget for that to make sure that we don't have any laps, um, in, in services. Similar to what we're doing now with this four-point-five-million-dollar referendum, where we're looking at replacing twenty-five-year-old roofs, or thirty-year-old roofs, that's the lifespan. So it just makes sense that they fall into that category. Same way with the track. Um, you know, if you get sixty-plus years out of a science classroom is, is doing really well.
Yes.
Sixty years out of an air handler is, is doing extremely well. We got twenty-six years out of temporary walls at the elementary school, which is extremely well. So, um, I mean, tho- those are the, I guess, the things that, again, like Scott said, it, it was just nice to see all that put in the categories, um, that, that people's criteria.
Very good. All right, personnel did not meet. Policy committee?
So we looked at, um, policy three forty-three point five, start college now. And the only thing that has changed on there is how many high school credits will be granted. It'll be one-third instead of one-fourth, so that'll match the other policy that we had changed about this.
Okay.
And then the other one we looked at was, well, it's in our action items, so we'll talk about that later. It's, we're changing an exhibit, and that's like an immediate change, and so we don't need a first reading since it's an exhibit.
Okay. All right, curriculum committee?
Uh, we did not meet, but I can kind of give a little bit of an update if you guys want one. Uh, I don't know if you want me to come sit up there or not.
Yep.
So we did not meet, we're kind of in a, a waiting, holding pattern, I guess, right now. Um, waiting on course registration numbers, that dictates a lot of decisions at the high school about what do we need to purchase and how much of it. And then our budget sheets are still out. So, teachers, we, we made a change, Lynn and I worked together to kind of come up with a change in how some of the curriculum things were going to be budgeted for. So, all the things like novels that they might need in a classroom are on a different sheet now that's going to cycle through me. So I'm waiting for those green budget sheets to get turned in, so then I know what I need to add to my curriculum budgets. So, just with budget sheets and course registrations, the curriculum world is kind of slow right now, and it's going to get really, really busy for me in like two weeks when all this information gets handed to me. So, lots of decisions then to be made about what curriculum we're going to be ordering for some different areas. Math, we did make our decision on that, waiting on numbers, so I know how many geometry books do we need for students next year? We're going to get some consumable workbook-style books, and so numbers, we need to know before we get to that point. Um, and Mr. Farrell, him retiring, I think he planned this all out because his curriculum is expiring in August. So now with the new teacher coming in, it'd be nice to talk with her, does she want to stick with what she's been using? She's familiar with a program called HMH, and it's actually what our fifth through eighth grade is using. So we could build on that in our ninth grade science as well. So, now that we have a teacher that, hopefully you guys will approve the hire of, there will be some continuing conversations there about what curriculum we want to move forward with in our science departments as well. So, March curriculum meeting might be a little bit of a longer one, because I'll have all the information by then.
Okay.
We just didn't have much to discuss this month, and.
Sure.
So we've kind of postponed that for now. If anyone has curriculum questions, I can answer, or do my best to.
Nope, well, save it for March.
All right.
All right, thank you. Culture committee did not meet.
Did not meet, uh, did have a very, uh, successful winter gathering. A lot of people there, and, uh, everybody had a good time.
Right.
So, thank you to the organizers.
Right. Correspondents, any? None? Positive happenings? Nothing positive happened.
Success for wrestling, they really.
Oh, yeah.
They continue on this, this, uh, this weekend, it'd be exciting to see hopefully some.
I'm excited to see a drama production again.
Yes, for sure.
We didn't have one last year at all.
I'm glad that's back, that's.
Yes.
I'm looking forward to going to it.
Did we talk about archery at the last meeting, or this one? Are they moving on yet?
I haven't heard anything.
On the archery?
Archery. I think it's a little early yet.
It's a little yet.
Okay, okay. All right, then we'll move on to the action items. First item is approval of a resolution authorizing the issuance of an order relating to school district boundaries on the petition filed by Mark and Lisa Totten and Mike and Alexandra Ezel. Do you need a motion? Yes, there is.
That's why I was waiting.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Got it. Here, right here.
Okay.
I move to adopt the resolution granting the petition for detachment of the land described in this, in the petition filed by Mark and Lisa Totten and Mike Alexandra Ezel from the Stevens Point area public school district, and attaching it to the school district department.
Okay, I will second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote, please. Scott?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Kayla?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, resolution passed. Approval of an Eagle Scout project at the school forest.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. You're going to be speaking. It's entirely up to you.
I'll sit down.
Yeah.
So hello, I'm Brody Brownsky, and I'm with the, uh, Boy Scout Troop Three Seven Nine out of Polinko, Wisconsin. And I can come to you for approval for my Eagle Scout project. So, I will be putting up the informational board in the school forest. And it's going to be, if you're looking, like, at it from like above, right? Yeah, that's what it'll look like, and then the location would be, there's currently an Auburndale sign where, uh, the trails start, and it would go there.
Okay.
So, Mr. Knoyer and I have talked about this, and I talked with Jaski this past Wednesday. And we would be, I would be building it this upcoming summer. And I already have where the funds are coming from, and it's a very nice lady, her name is Cynthia Culka, and she would be donating all the funds for me to purchase the materials and everything to build this. Uh, if you open up your packets or whatever you have, you'll see there's two things that I will be purchasing online that won't be built by me. There's the informational board, looks like this, that's where all the information will be put on. It is a rubber tack board on the inside, and it closes, and it's a glass pane in front of it. So it won't be blown away, and Mr. Knoyer will be able to open it, or any, I don't, I don't know, like, you guys or district staff, something like that, right? And put anything that you need up there. And then you'll have the underneath part for any pamphlets, flyers that you need to put in, and that will just be able to be lifted up. And, uh, they're made of one-hundred percent recycled materials, those two parts. And I would be building and purchasing the frame that these will sit in, and will probably be purchased from Haas Building. So, sorry, I'm just trying to think of more other bases I need to cover. Um, Mr. Knoyer came up to me this past, whatever, it was like two, three months ago, asking about this project. And he told me that the reason why he wanted it, right, is that he hopes that it will increase, uh, community involvement in things like the pumpkin glow, ice glow, uh, state fee, or the Rott thing for the tractor club. And by providing more information for people, whether they're just coming to Auburndale or coming to the school forest to enjoy the wonderful school forest that we have. And I think that this provides a great opportunity, not for me, not just for me, but for everyone, so that, hey, I can get my Eagle Scout project done. And for information to be spread in this pretty easy way.
Right. Enhance our school forest.
Yes. And he's, the location would be, it would be the, uh, south uh, west corner. As you come in the lot, it would be on the left-hand side, there's already a, a sign there.
Oh, sure.
And they're talking about, um, this sign, um, being put on, uh, like skids. So it could be picked up and moved for mowing and then put back, and, um, so it wouldn't have the grass going up around it, it would, it would look very neat and clean there, so, um, so that, that would be the location, because there's, there's two trails. There's the one to the right of the building as you go straight out to the north, or there's the one, uh, used to, to the left, or that's, that's southern field. It would be on that left-hand side as you come off the lot.
Very good. Any questions?
So Brody, with the legs of it and such, uh, what is, I guess, what are you planning on using so that it is stable when we end up having wind and that type of thing?
So there'll be four-by-fours on the bottom, and then we'll have a tarp on top of that, and we can put rocks or whatever you want to anchor it down. And you can move the tarp and the rocks, and then you can lift them up and move the entire structure.
Okay, thank you.
Is it going to be completely made out of wood?
So, every part that's not the, this, and this part will be out of wood, and then we'll have the roof, it will be an average shape or something. And then epoxy glass. Yep. On the fronts, that's non-breakable, but transparent.
Do you think there needs to be, uh, a lock on that?
I can put a lock on that, yeah.
I'm, I'm just throwing, you know, people, open it and.
We have added two cameras, security cameras to that, uh, here, I'm not sure if that location is covered with our own security camera, but we do have cameras now at the school forest, which, you know, which will help with ambering.
And you said with that, that rubber, is it one of those kind of rubbers where you can push lettering in?
Yes.
Yeah, so you don't want to take in that stuff.
So the, the wood then that, that you're using, uh, I guess, how is the wood going to be protected against the weather?
It'll be treated.
Okay.
I get back to Scott's comment about locking, and I, I truly think that there needs to be a lock on there, because you don't want someone
taking all your lettering, right?
Yeah.
Or messing with what you put in there.
Right.
So then, once this is built, then it becomes the responsibility of the school district?
Yes.
This, thi- this is, um, the last time I, I guess, when I served as principal in the district, the Eagle Scout project, at that time, um, we were approached and approved, um, all the blocking around the Auburndale school signs, the raised blocking and so on. That was an Eagle Scout project done way back in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, somewhere in that, in that range. That was that Students' Eagle Scout project, and, um, it, it's, it looks twenty-some years old, but, um, I, I think it has, has done a.
Held up well.
It's, it's held up fairly well, I mean, it needs some attention now, and that, again, becomes our responsibility, same as this would be.
Mm-hmm.
It's being built and then donated to the school, it becomes school property for us to, to maintain and use. Again, I, I think it's valuable, so.
Yes.
I would support it.
Now, motion for approval?
I move to approve the Eagle Scout project as presented.
I'll second that. Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say thank you, and I realize that, um, this is a major thing to become, this Eagle Scout project is always a major accomplishment.
Yes.
And very few people actually carry it through.
Thank you very much.
So I want to congratulate you on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one other question.
How big? Uh, I believe we came up with just about six foot tall.
Six foot tall, so like your inside is what? A wide is six foot wide?
Uh, I have to check. What, I, I, I think it was about eight inches, something. Eight inches on the inside, and then I think it was about four. Yeah. Four. I think five by four or something. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Brody.
Okay, approval of additional authorized signers for the First State Bank W.D. Connor Scholarship.
I, I move to approve additional authorized signers, uh, for the First State Bank W.D. Connor Scholarship Fund.
I'm going to second that.
Motion is made, and. Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of early college credit program applications.
Here's the list. We're going here, the early college. Help me out, Johnny Ray. Early college credit are...
Early college credit programs.
That's UW?
Yep, Start College Now is.
Is the tech, okay. Okay. So these are combined together here on this list. But in, as action items, they are two separate ones, just so you're aware.
Oh, okay.
They're two, they're two separate. You have to have two motions. Even though the credits are, or the classes, of course, aren't combined here.
Okay, early college and start.
There have to be two separate.
Okay.
I move to approve the early college credit program applications.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded for approval of the early college credit program applications.
I guess I do have one question for Johnny Ray is, I notice here there's a couple, two credits, and so that transfers to point seven for us. Does that cause any students any difficulty with reaching the proper number of credits that we need for them to graduate their senior year?
No, most of those ones are the nursing assistant program, and that was a change at the tech school system. It used to be a three-credit. Of course, they changed it to a two-credit. That doesn't satisfy anything other than elective credits for us. And so really, when we changed the policy to go for a full credit, it was for more of those core subject areas, the English, the math, the science, and the social studies because we were block scheduled. So the point seven shouldn't harm anybody.
And as you said, it's elect, towards their elective credits that they need for graduating. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the Start College Now applications.
I move to approve the Start College Now application. Second.
The motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of a resolution to be sent to the Department of Transportation regarding the safety of the intersection of State Highway one eighty-six and US Highway ten.
I move approval of a resolution to be sent to the DLT regarding the safety of the intersection of State Highway one eighty-six and US Highway ten.
I will second that. Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion?
If you have that resolution.
I read it through. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution passed. Approval of Hannah Pankrits for the high school science teaching position.
I move to approve Hannah Pankrits for the high school science teaching position.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Any discussion?
Sue and I were on the interview team for that, and we were very happy with the answers that Hannah gave. All of her credentials and everything checked out very well. And so now we're very happy to go and recommend her for joining our staff.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the replacement of lights in the new gym by McMillan Electric.
I move to approve the replacement lights in new gym by McMillan Electric.
I'll second that.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion?
Just, I guess, a point of clarification here. The lights that we have in there now are, they're the T-five bulbs. They're the real small ones. We've got their four-foot-long ballast or fixtures. I think there's eight bulbs in each one. They're mounted to the ceiling, and they've got a metal cage that sits in front of them to stop anything that goes up there for hitting them. The problem is, as volleyballs or softballs or whatever hits those lights, they shake. And then those T-five bulbs fall out of the slots, and then they sit and they hang on those wired cages till the next time something gets hit, then this two, four-foot tuba glass comes crashing to the floor. So the, the thought is, let's get rid of the bulbs and go to LEDs. And if you replaced any lights, you know, right now, LED, everything is LEDs. It takes care of that issue. We still have the protective cage, but now there's nothing that can shake loose. More energy efficient, much safer. Right now, when I was in there the other day, there, I think there's six or eight that are dislodged. They're up in the cages, but you just can't get a step ladder and change them. You gotta wait till the gym is cleared, pull out the lift, the genie, put the four anchors out, go up, replace it, and come down, and wait till the next day when the next one vibrates out. Looks like there are thirty-six times eight. There's that many bulbs that are in that ceiling in the new gym. So that would be the recommendation to do that. And the other advantage is, right now, there is a rebate available, energy rebate available. So for instance, in the new gym, I put that in there, you're going to get three thousand two hundred and forty dollars back or ninety dollars per light that is replaced. Thirty-six times ninety is three thousand dollars. So out of that cost, you're going to recoup over three thousand dollars in it. So it's going to be safer and it's going to be better. The idea is to get it done now over Easter. The Thursday, we're off, no students are in the building. They can come in to get it done one day. That gets that off of the floors when summertime comes, when they're sanding, sealing, and painting. We don't have to worry about that machine going over top of our floor and possibly ruining it. So we'll get it done. It'll be done before graduation. So that's kind of why we pushed it up now.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the DECA trip to national competition in Orlando, April twenty-fifth through the thirtieth.
I move to approve the DECA trip to national competition in Orlando, April twenty-fifth through the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? I believe Mr. Jocinski concluded his form in here.
Yeah, he completed. He and I talked. There's enough money to cover it. This would be the, this would be the national event. They have to compete at state to qualify. So in order to make sure that if they haven't qualified, it meets the timelines for the board. He put it on now, anticipating that some will qualify. But if none do, then obviously they would not be taking anybody, and you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't do anything. But like I said, he just wants to make sure he meets the deadlines. Considering I did speak, there is enough money budgeted and in that Fund Twenty-One account to cover all the expenses for this trip, so no burden to the district.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the out-of-state trip to the Holocaust exhibit in Skokie, Illinois, March fifth. And then we also have this field cross, field trip request form filed out.
I move to approve the out-of-state trip to the Holocaust exhibit in Skokie, Illinois, March fifth.
I'll second that.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion?
Do we need a roll call since it's... Pass or not? No?
And I think Steve mentioned this in his administrative report as well.
Right.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the HOSA trip to Wisconsin Dells on April sixth through the eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. No, I didn't see anything on that. The request form?
Should, it's not in your packet? I might have got this one.
I have two sheets from Dave, but...
I might have got this one. Did I get this one later?
Yeah, I know I sent it to you. I think it was the last one that was sent to you, so I...
Okay. I have. Oh, I sent your packets on Friday. I probably got it Monday.
Don is here to be a special.
Oh, she's chaperoning, yeah.
So it's a state council conference, and we had students, they have to do testing in January to qualify for state. So we have six to the two, twelve that are going who qualified. The other six can do the second chance testing there, and then there's also teen challenges where they can compete against other HOSA members. They all have responsibilities there.
Okay.
So the one that will, the six who qualify for the state, if they are successful, they can qualify for a national which would be in Tennessee in June.
Oh.
I move to approve the HOSA trip to Wisconsin Dells on April sixth through eighth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I second that. The motion is made and seconded. Any other discussion?
The only discussion I would have is, we have the sports people come and talk. I would like to see these groups come and talk, how their...
Report on their...
Report on their trips to or whatever.
That would be nice.
After they return.
Yeah.
Not all at once.
Right. Yeah, that would be nice. Yeah, they can let us know what they're doing. Okay?
I think people would like...
Yeah, to understand what HOSA or DECA or whatever is. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the exhibit for policy three forty-three point seven zero, virtual online course request.
I move...
Oh, that's, okay.
Yes.
It might be in the...
It's in there. It's her...
It's in the middle, correct. Yes.
We moved it to the end and firmly did that Tuesday.
Yes. So I move approval of the exhibit for policy three four three point seven zero, virtual online course request.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Any discussion?
This document that we all have in the packet and such replaces another exhibit that we have. And by having this exhibit, then it is one form that will need to be filled out rather than two.
Okay.
And so, yes. It's a lot less confusing for everybody by going and getting this change of exhibit.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Right, now, we need a motion for closed session, proposed closed session under Wisconsin statutes, nineteen point eight five per one G to confer with legal counsel who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the board with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved with respect to legal proceedings and potential settlement with the Wisconsin Department of Justice.
I move to go to closed session.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Whoever will call vote. Kayla?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. We will be going into close. Did you get those papers about that mental wellness mine? I put it in your mailbox in the office.